I just have a couple of things to say here. The, I'd like to call to order the public hearing for the Stratford Planning Commission for the advertised petition of 821 Wood End Road, lots A and B. Before calling for the petition, I would like to inform those of you who have never appeared before us that it is the policy of this commission to have questions of the petitioner directed through the chair. The chair reserves the right to rule on cross-examination for the purpose of clarification of technical questions. I wish to announce that should any, on tonight's agenda, take more than anticipated, this public hearing may conclude at 11:00 PM and be continued at another date, which will be established at that time. Any items not heard by 11:00 PM tonight will be heard at the continued public hearing. For the record, petition to be heard this evening was advertised in the Connecticut Post on February 6th and February 18th.
February 13th, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, February 13th. That's okay, can't read this. These properties were duly posted on February 8th, 2019. Okay. We have a representative of the petitioner. If you could state your name and address, and I believe you had submitted your certificates of mailing to, already.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that we already have. Okay, I will then turn it over to the petitioner.
Chair Commissioners, Chris Russo with Russo &amp; Rizzio LLC, offices at 1 Post Road in Fairfield. Glad to be with you here tonight on behalf of Wood End LLC, who is the property owner of 821 Wood End Road. We're here asking for a modification of the approval that was given by this commission on October 16th of last year. You might remember this application. We filed an appeal of the decision just to preserve our rights and get an opportunity to come before you to discuss that approval. As a quick refresher, this was a two-lot subdivision in the MA zoning district. The first lot, A, which is the lot that's closer to Wood End Road, contains an existing industrial building that is currently leased by Bobcat of Connecticut. And the second lot, Lot B, which is predominantly in the rear, or farther away, I should say, from Wood End Road, is a storage area for a royal flush. The proposed subdivision complied with all the development standards. There were no improvements proposed, which I think is an important point. It didn't propose a new road or access. There was, there's no corresponding zoning application for a proposed building. The, in the immediate future, the intent is for the properties to remain the same. There were improvements connected with the wetlands approval. There was removal of some gravel that was proposed, and then some barriers to, there's about 550 square feet of wetlands on the rear of the property. So there were some improvements connected with that. The, the conditions which were asking to be removed from the approval, and does everybody have a, I submitted with it but a copy of our approval that came from October. The first condition was condition number two, soil study analysis and water pollution analysis are completed and approved by the town engineer. And then condition number five, that the applicant shall work with the zoning enforcement officer to determine if both of the current uses on the rear lot are permitted. One or both of the tenants may be required to vacate the site depending on the ZEO's determination. These are the two conditions that we would like to be removed. And I just want to first say before discussing it that we're not dismissive of these conditions and what this commission was trying to ascertain and what they're trying to determine about the property. We just feel that these conditions are not appropriate for the subdivision approval. And certainly, my client is amenable and would be willing to work with the zoning enforcement officer and any health inspector who we feel have the rights, whether or not we have this subdivision application or not, to come in if there's an illegal use or if there's some type of pollution. But for the subdivision approval, because the law is very constrained in what conditions can be put on a subdivision approval, and these mainly have to do with use rather than land and separation, and because we're not proposing really any improvements here in connection with the subdivision, we don't feel that these conditions are appropriate. And we ask that they be removed. Again, the ZEO, if there's an illegal use on the property, he could come yesterday, he could come today, he could come tomorrow and issue an order to comply if he feels that we have an illegal use on the property. And I think the same thing would apply for the health inspector. If the health inspector suspected that our use on, and I think it's clear that the property that everybody's concerned about is Lot B, which is the property that has the storage area on it. But if he felt that there was polluting going on, that he could also, at any point, issue an order that, one, to inspect to see if we do have pollution there. We're confident that we don't and that the site is being remedied with the wetlands work and that there is no pollution. But they would certainly have the right to take that action regardless of whether we were applying for a subdivision or not. The issue for us is we're looking to transfer the front parcel that's currently occupied by Bobcat to Bobcat. Bobcat is looking to set up roots in Stratford and to stay here, and that sale is contingent on the subdivision. And these items hopefully could be resolved quickly, but still, because they're tied to the subdivision, it holds up the subdivision until they're satisfied. And that's kind of an unknown timeline for resolving those issues because it is kind of open-ended there. So that's why we'd ask for these conditions to be removed from the subdivision approval. But again, we're amenable and happy to work with the town if they think that there's some issue there. And we believe that the town, rights are preserved for addressing those issues, even if it's not included in the subdivision. And of course, if there was ever a redevelopment of any of these sites, either of these sites, a building was proposed for that Lot B, that would come through zoning and there would be a whole process there for analyzing the property. So for those reasons, we respectfully request that these conditions be removed. The appeal that's pending is solely based on these conditions. So if they were removed, we would withdraw the appeal. Happy to answer any questions with regard to it? I have, just to know, I have, we've sent the application package to Attorney Florrick and Attorney Kelly. My partner Ray Rizzio had been speaking with Attorney Kelly. I have not heard back from him today as of this hearing, but, and no one's here for it, but we have been in conversation with the town attorney about this.
Okay. And I believe we did receive some communications ourselves from the town attorney.
Okay.
To assist us with this. Any questions from the commissioners? Mr. Watson?
I have a question.
Put your, thank you.
The document that we got, and I don't know if this was today, or it was this document here?
Yeah, I'm not seeing that, sorry.
It was internal to commissioners. But the picture that's used on it is a current aerial view of the property in use. And it shows the wetlands being totally used inappropriately in this thing, which is part of what raised my questions to begin with, that planning does have something to do with protecting our wetlands.
Absolutely.
That's within the realm, no matter what's happening, even with the subdivision, particularly with the subdivision. It's our job to make sure that our land uses are the best as possible. So we're presented with a drawing here that shows wetlands that on the map are saying we're protecting them, but in the actual picture of current use, we're showing that they're far from being protected. So that was what raised my meter. The other thing that I did was I went to visit the property, and I happened to visit it during one of our four-inch rainstorms, when Wood End Road was about six or eight inches underwater. And the property A, the roadway on both sides was like a upland river running right down into the road, which in and of itself is a problem that needs to be corrected, but not necessarily exactly having to do with the subdivision. Except, there are two pipes that run between A and B, and they run from a drainage ditch that it goes across A and B. And everything that we've been hearing here is that these properties are absolutely subdivided, that there are no connections, that there is no traveling between the two, there is no joined roadways, and we, I never got any word on this. So that also is planning. That's our job to make sure that the neighbors are not being flooded by anything that's happening on a property. And when we have the opportunity, it is our job, according to our MS4 permits, which are essentially our wastewater and our stormwater permits, that it is our job and responsibility of planning to make sure that we improve conditions in any kind of decisions that we make. So I'm still expecting that, no matter how we go forward, that those issues will not go away, because currently, your property is a detriment to the property around it, not within A and B, that I am speaking up for here in terms of flooding. We have, that area will continue to be a flooding issue. Right now, it's the focus of our flooding issues in Stratford. So we need to put some real attention to it. Those are the two issues that I see that, no matter what we decide here tonight, are two issues that need to be focused on, whether it's directly to your client or through town administration. We need to work on doing something about that. It should be a solution to property A as much as to property B, because currently, all of the drainage that I see around there is not holding the water on that site that needs to be held. The other thing that I saw was that, oh, I read through the list of what we had asked to be included. I don't think that, I could argue two and five forever, but it's been argued in courts right now, and we're not going to make that case again. So personally, I feel like I could say yes to that. But I cannot say yes to that without including our commissioner, our wetlands commissioner, her comments in that as an, as an, as an additional point. So just so everybody knows, that's my thinking on this, and I've studied it, and it's complicated. But I think that
Yeah, oh yeah.
We will walk, we can walk away saying that we've done our best for the situation, and you can walk away saying to your client, you can move forward. So I think that, hopefully, that will be enough to get this thing off our table and get it into the works. That's my three cents.
And just to address that, and thank you, Commissioner. With regard to the wetlands, so there are these improvements to try and protect the wetlands, and, you know, removing the gravel area, putting in this wall barrier here, and then also removing gravel area over here.
But may I be very frank with you, okay? It's not really protect the wetlands, it's to give yourself the largest parking area possible. So I appreciate that you're pointing that out, but that's not what it's for.
But it's, but it does provide a protection there, and it's something that's been improved by wetlands.
Okay, but if you really want to look at wetlands, you do not build a hard wall on any wetland. That is not what protects a wetland. You have sloped areas that go towards the wetlands so that the water can be absorbed in that wetland. The water can bounce back and forth depending on conditions. So that's a point you can argue all you want, but that's a point I can't really accept.
Well, and unfortunately, I was not representing my client during the times when they went through wetlands. The only thing I do know is that they went back and forth, that they relate to me, is that they went back and forth with wetlands a lot, and then secured approval for making these modifications to, to try to do something. And then with regards to the drainage issues, we are leaving, because I agree with you, one of the things, I mean, if you're separating lots, you want to make sure that, that by cutting them off, that you don't worsen a situation on one lot, and that something like water retention doesn't, you know, become a problem because you're cut off from the other lot. And that's why we're not asking for condition one to be removed regarding a water retention plan, and we are not asking for the removal of condition three, which, where we have to have a licensed engineer verify that both of the lots comply with the town's MS4 permit. So we are leaving those. Obviously, if you do separate lots, there are certain things I think you have to show and prove that you're not worsening the situation. And it's really just two and five, which we think are more specifically geared towards uses, and also can be handled independently by other town departments. I mean, and if, you know, I can't direct anybody in the town to go do something, but I mean, if zoning said to the health inspector and to the ZEO, you know, tomorrow I want you to go inspect this property, there's nothing we could do to stop them. And certainly, they would have their right to go do that right away.
My final point is that I, when, if you are absolutely splitting these properties, essentially creating a barrier between the two properties, your only access to plot A, B is in the lower right-hand corner where you are bringing in 20-foot, 30-foot, 40-foot tractor trailers, I believe, and you need a turning radius there that, in my mind, looking at it, it does not exist unless you take over wetlands. You're going to have
You mean, in the rear portion of the site?
Yep.
Okay.
So it's fine if we grant you this, but you should know, going back to your clients, that you're going to come back to us asking for variance or asking for something that doesn't literally exist in the area that I see, the space that's given. So that's something that you're also going to need to really look in, look at very carefully.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have a turning thing to make sure, to see, to see.
Well, I'm reading what, what, I'm remembering the original documents where they said that wouldn't be a problem. But I will tell you, it will be a problem when you get in turning radiuses and all of that. But those are my points. I will stop. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions from any of the other commissioners? Any other comments you'd like to make?
No, thank you very much for your time. Thank you for your comments. And I could just state for the client that we certainly will be willing to work with the town, and if the ZEO or health inspector, if they wish to look at the property, and I'm happy to discuss with ZEO, I deal with Stratford zoning a lot, to work with them on the uses. We're just asking that it be removed from the subdivision approval so we can move forward, complete the subdivision, and transfer the property to Bobcat.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susmita?
I just wanted to state for the record, I spoke to the conservation administrator, Tina Beato, this afternoon, and I asked her what her concerns were regarding this application. She mentioned that when the applicant is ready to bring revised plans, they have to come back to inland wetlands for a permit and a sign-off from the conservation administrator, and also to include her comments that she sent to the staff earlier this month on the application as part of the conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, I will next be asking the members of the public to comment in favor or opposition to the petition. I will also allow general comments and observation from those who are neither in favor or opposition to the petition. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of the petition? Yes, just in case you can't hear me, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the petition? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the petition? Is there anyone who is neither in favor nor in opposition, but who wishes to provide comments on the petition? Is there anyone who is neither in favor nor in opposition, but who wishes to provide comments on the petition? Hearing none, a motion is in order to close.
Second?
Who?
Oh, oh, first. So ordered.
Harold Watson. Mr. Semp is the second. Motion's been made and seconded to close. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we are closing the public I thought that's what he was doing. Okay. Sorry. Now we got one more part. We need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Semp, second.
Second.
Mr. Watson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so we are done with the public hearing at 7:22. And can I have a motion to recess the administrative session?
No.
No?
You just have to make a motion to make a decision.
Okay, so we've closed the public hearing, we're going to
Open.
Okay. All right, so we'll open up the Planning Commission meeting at 7:22. And the first item on the agenda, well, first let me say that we have with us Jonathan Gonzalez from Southern Connecticut State University, who is an intern, and he is here observing us for the evening. Welcome, and thanks for being here. Okay, so we'll open the meeting of February 19th, 2019, and the first item on the agenda is to discuss the 821 Wood End Road. Oh. Can I have a motion to take it off, the discussion of the 821 Wood End Road off the table? Mr. Vigliotti, second. Mr. Semp, sorry, didn't see that hand go up. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, so now we need a motion regarding
So I'm going to make a motion, but do I need to re, can I just make an addenda to our previous motion, or do we have to go back and remake the whole motion over? Can I just make a correctional?
I think you can make a modification.
Okay. So I'm going to make a modified, a modification to our prior 821 Wood End ruling, correct?
Correct.
As follows. The planning board removes conditions two and five from the subdivision approval granted for this property dated October 16th, 2018. However, we include conservation administrators' additional comments noted below in full. So that you can just take from this.
Okay. Very good. So we have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Vigliotti, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any position? Hearing none, it is approved as modified. Thank you very much. Okay, you're all set, and you have to make copies.
It costs $20,000.
Okay. All righty. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes from January 22nd, 2019. Have a motion?
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Semp. Second from Mr. Vigliotti, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Okay, we're going to, number two, zoning referrals, which is the petition of the Regalis LLC for change in the zone. And I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Vigliotti, and I am recusing myself from this petition.
So we have a referral petition from Regalis LLC to change zone from RS1 to the proposed Orinok Village District at 170 Orinok Lane and 1180 James Farm Road. And I will just comment and say that I know that we've kind of talked about this property many times, and it seems that in many cases, it's inconsistent with our plan of conservation and development in most respects, although they do mention providing affordable housing because of the location in the northern end of town, that it's really not conducive to to meet the needs of people who would normally access low-income housing. Would you like to share? The site plan review notices and recognizes that there are a lot of units in a small area. Recommendation is to eliminate units in order to make it more manageable and for emergency response vehicles to be able to access the site safely. So rather than allow them to change the zoning in order to put in what they want, our town, you know, Jay is saying that we should probably ask them to comply with what we have, what regulations we have. Mr. Watson?
Yes, we also discussed this, I think, in great detail many times in the past, and some things, to my knowledge, have not changed. There is, there are two lots here, one of which had a proposal for it, and this is the proposal for the other lot. So we have never heard back from the parties what is happening with that other lot. When we got the plans for the other lot, we asked them what they were doing with this lot, and they couldn't tell us. So now they're asking us to approve text change for both lots when we don't have an idea of what they're asking really wanting to do with the combined, the combined both lots. So if they say 25, and they had 14 in the other one, then are we talking about 39? And if that's so, then everything we have is not accurate. So at the very least, we need them to come back with an accurate, and they need to pull one of those two and say, we're doing one or the other. But I also think that, looking at our P O C D, it is clear that there are point after point after point of where this building is inappropriate for the neighborhood. I know we want affordable housing. We would love to have affordable housing, but if we have 30 units and they do 10%, we're talking about three units. If they do 30%, we're talking about nine units out of all of this. I don't know that we should force upon that community that amount of density for this. I don't know that we have, this will not be our solution to affordable housing in this town, but it, and it's more of the same, we keep running into these same projects again and again and again, that we need to find a solution for affordable housing. But I do not think the intensity of the building here works with the neighborhood there. works with the neighborhood there. Granted, if we were to zone the north end in Orinok today, we might not zone two and five acre lots, but that is what's there now, and I, I just, I cannot see putting in this density in that area. I also think that environmentally, without knowing what's happening in that wetlands area, we would be crazy to say, "Yes, we're gonna change the text for this." Yes, ma'am?
I just wanna add, that last meeting, the last Planning Commission meeting, we voted on the text amendment, but we did not vote on the zone change part of the text amendment, so...
So now we're voting?
We are just voting on the zone change part of it. The text amendment, we took it off the table, and, I mean, we passed a motion, and we gave an unfavorable recommendation on the text amendment.
So we overruled the text amendment?
Yes.
Now, we are...
We are just taking the zone change part of this, because it wasn't voted on, and we just brought it back, because that has to be voted on, too.
Well, I think...
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we send to zoning with an unfavorable recommendation to change zone RS1 to OVD.
But give them a couple reasons, because that's what we decided.
Based on, uh, based on the site review plan, and based on, um, um...
P O C D.
Based, based on the fact that it doesn't conform to P O C D.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we have a, a motion to send the petition with an unfavorable recommendation of the zone change from an RS1 to Orinok Village District.
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So passes with a vote of three.
Excellent job, Mr. Vigliotti.
What?
Now I'm back.
Passed?
Okay, moving right along, we do not have a campsite plan review, we do not have an 824 review this meeting.
We voted against.
Okay. Make sure she knows that.
Next is the discussion of section 5.3 of the zoning regulations. So, Smitha, our town planner, has done a, a great job putting together the map. She updated it to the districts, voting districts, at, per our request. So we, we have that information. Also, I want to let you know that, uh, our town planner has submitted a proposal to the Community Development Block Grant Program for a workforce or affordable housing study in the amount of $50,000. The goal of which is to... The study aims to encourage sustainable housing growth and development in Stratford. In Stratford, by developing strategies to promote and preserve affordable workout, workforce housing in the town. Current barriers to promoting affordable workforce housing, such as zoning, community infrastructure, site environmental features, market conditions, available property, et cetera, will be specifically analyzed in developing such strategies. So she has submitted the, the grant, I don't know if you wanna comment on that at all?
Yes, we were invited to appear for a Q and A session before the grant committee tomorrow, which myself and Jay are planning to, you know, attend and answer any questions that the grant subcommittee has. So I'm hoping that we should be able to get this through, and I'm thankful to the Commission Chair. We met briefly, and I requested her to give me a letter of support for this grant, and she has agreed to give me a letter of support, and she did write it herself.
Yeah, um, I have the, the letter here, and pretty much I just read most of it to you, but basically, it says that, the, the first paragraph says that the Town of Stratford Planning Commission voted on February 19th to support the CDBG grant proposal submitted by the town planner, so Smitha Atata, Atat?
Atoto.
Atoto, To-to-ta. Hey, I got a worse name. For a workforce affordable housing study in the amount of $50,000. So if, if we could have, uh, I can show this to you, or you can just vote, it's up to you. You already on?
I'm over, we accept it. Is that all we need to do?
That's all you need.
Anybody else?
Can I have a second? Mr. Semp? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, anybody opposed? Anybody out there? Uh, I will sign this, and we will send it on to, uh, Mr. Christopher Bandeki with the Community, Office of Community Development, okay? Do you need this for? For the minutes?
Who?
Okay, any other questions, any other comments, or things you wanna discuss on the section 5.3?
I do, 'cause I, I...
Mr. Watson?
I can't thank you enough for this, ma'am. I really do, I think this will help us actually move forward from this map. I think it, it puts everything in a, in a very different light. The only thing that I, I wish we could come to terms with, because it actually represents real housing and not statistics. I have, in my neighborhood, a block and a half from where I live, a senior citizen's housing that is in District 6, which does not appear here, I don't believe.
Should be.
Is it? Is that Lucas Gardens?
Yeah.
Oh, then I, my apologies. 'Cause it doesn't, it's, it's not named, but...
Were you having a senior moment?
Yeah, I was definitely having a senior moment. I was, I was imagining myself trying to get in there in two years' time.
I think you, I'm sorry.
But my question is, how many, how many more apartments do we have that are pre-1984, or whatever this was? Do we know?
Well, it's on your chart.
I think, um...
Not necessarily, it's not on the chart, because you didn't, you, you did not include, you only included post-84, or whatever.
Yes, um, we have about 1,000 or more before 1984, because when I totaled everything, it was around 2,000 and change.
Right.
But then, the ones after 1984, um, looks like only 736 or something.
So that would get, like, success, vil, whatever, the village and all of that?
Yes, I do.
Those areas? Because I looked, I'm looking here, saying that... The next question that's gonna be asked by anybody who looks at this, how many apartments are there in my district?
I did a total by district for only those that are after 1984, after the...
Yeah.
Regulation came into effect, and your district number is?
I'm six.
You're six, um...
So, get ready.
There's none after 1984, yeah. But, um, I was talking to Pat, I mean, the Commission Chair, and my idea of promoting affordable housing, I mean, as a planner, is to allow people to age in place. It's not like you always have to have apartments everywhere to have affordable housing.
And that's part of my question, my, my District 6 is filled with essentially post-war, first, I would call them mil, milit, soldiers coming back from the war, little...
Working in airports.
Post-war capes. And a lot of the people there, like me, are aging. But I would love to stay there for the rest of my life, but at some point, it's a lot of house, even, even though it's a small house. Maybe that's another thing that we could actually determine under a grant, is, do we take certain neighborhoods that are essentially one-family housing, that have an older population, and create some kind of a zoning incentive, a tax reduction incentive? If you can, if you can, you know, could we, could we create, make that part of our planning? And would that qualify for affordable housing? Because the, the reason you're taking 84, that's the, that's when affordable, the statute came in for affordable housing. It's my understanding, anything prior to that's not counted, because it was already there. But could we find a way of doing something like that, which might be more affordable, and might be faster to implement than building multifamily housing, or multi, or apartment buildings everywhere? But, does that make any sense? We, we've talked about this before, but if we could fit that into this stream, saying that, then one of the things we do is we take away everybody saying, "They're gonna tear down my neighborhood to put up apartments." If you have that other option out there, then you can say, "Well, if you don't want an apartment building, then what are you doing in your neighborhoods with your elderly, in terms of keeping them in their homes?" We could start building a more balanced program that might not have so much resistance.
Yes, and I have ideas, but again, this should be backed up by thorough analysis of the area. That's why we are seeking a grant here. But on the face of it, I can say that I have seen areas, I mean, other communities encourage accessory units in the single-family homes.
Which we voted on this year here.
Or, you know, have an additional accessway for, in kitchen, so that, you know, you could rent it out to somebody else, so they can help maintain the house for you, you can, that's another source of income to pay the mortgage. That's affordability, you're aging in place, you can have a relative live with you. So there are options that people are do, discovering, like, you know, and implementing, but nothing should be taken like that and implemented without an analysis of the demographic conditions, and the, you know, housing conditions, and incomes, and other situations.
Well, I, I guess maybe that's part of what I would ask if you're doing this, this survey, could we also add in there, what kind of an aging senior population do we have that also are homeowners?
Sure.
Because that might be, I assume that's easy to get through tax records, but if we could put that in there, saying we have a potential, if we were to take these people, all these people, and even assume only 25% of them were willing to even look into something like this, how many units could we come up with, without doing a whole lot of work?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the rationale for putting in the grant is to do just that, is to look at all of the...
Alternatives.
Alternatives, and, and questions, and I would hope that, before an RFP went out, for, uh, to get a contractor, professional services contract, that the Commission can also have input into some of the questions, or the scope of the work that the contractor would do. So some of these questions that you're bringing up now could also be discussed.
I just wanted to prove that I have been thinking about it, and I really appreciate you getting this. I think it's really a good thing for us to...
And so has Sismetha, 'cause she brought it up in our, our meeting, and I think it's a, an excellent idea. Also, if you look at the map, I, I think the first map we saw was by school district, and there were districts that did not have apartments, completely, nothing there. But if you look at it from this map, every district has some apartments or condominiums in it. Also, in, in, Sismetha is gonna check, but in number four and number six, which do not have a lot, I think they have one each, if I read this correctly, might also be part of the TOD, within the TOD, so, although they may not have apartments at the moment, the potential is there in those two areas, without doing anything to, about section 5.3.
Yeah, because of Main Street, you're right.
Right, so, uh, you know, even though, I think those are the only two districts, if I read this correctly, that only have one apartment. Yeah. But, this is, these are two ways, the TOD, and the possibility of, of having these in-law apartments, or in, whatever you wanna call it, that possibility could assist us in our, expanding our number of apartments, or opportunities, especially for our aging population. I think Stratford, I don't think we're number one anymore, but we're up there as far as the percentage of senior citizens. So I think that's an area that we have to explore sooner rather than later, but let's hope that we can get the grant. Just FYI, 'cause I know this happens, the funds would not become available through CDBG until August, at the earliest, so. And I'm sure that Sismetha will keep us up to date.
I will, in fact, I'll update you about what happened tomorrow at the next meeting.
Good. Okay, any other questions on 5.3? Okay, uh, number six, erosion and sediment control plan, we have nothing, no bond releases. Implementation plans, any status update on the Greenway project?
Our last Greenway meeting was canceled. I would assume that there will be changes, they're ready with the phase, I'll say phase one. The Complete Streets, really, I consider to be phase two. It's actually four and five and six or seven, but I'll leave it that way. But because of the Shakespeare Theater, I will bet you that, that loop might get delayed, or whatever. But otherwise, they're doing drawings, they're ready, they really are...
Now, when...
Ready to move.
When these drawings are completed, will they come before the Planning Commission, right? For approval?
I think they will have to.
Yeah, I...
Yeah.
I think the answer to that is yes, but I'm just double checking.
Yeah.
Okay.
My upset was that everything has fallen a year behind. Which we were supposed to have everything finished by this, the end of this summer.
Yes, but...
We're now a full year beyond what we, which compared to other trails in the state, that really is a shame. We need to find a way to get these things moving much faster, um, so...
One good thing is, the Greenway Committee is meeting again.
Yes, that, that, that should actually help.
Yeah.
But I, I look at, I look at our implementation, and we are taking three times as long as other cities in doing similar projects. So we need to find a way to make that, to make our vendors work faster in that.
We also now have a town planner, which we haven't had in five or eight years.
And that's why she's joining the Greenway Committees.
That's right.
I was hoping to attend the first meeting, but it got canceled, so I'm looking forward to the, you know...
Well, hopefully, it is, it will really take off, now that Sismetha is here.
A permanent gift.
It's kind of shepherded through, 'cause our last town planner is the one who really put the Greenway together, and the Greenway Committee, and everything, so, and got a lot of grant money for it as well, so, I think that'll be great. Anything else on the Greenway? Complete Streets?
Okay, um, same update like last time, that's all. They're working on it, the consultants.
Okay, and they will also bring that to us?
Yes.
Anything else on, anything on coastal resiliency plan?
Yes, I just wanted to add that we also applied for a $20,000 grant before the CDBG Subcommittee for the coastal resiliency plan implementation. So essentially, what we need funding to be able to distribute these flood information brochures to property owners across the town, and we have like about 20,000 structures, so if you have 20,000 mailing addresses, and it's a significant cost, you know, if you have to print these, and, and, you know, have somebody shove them in the envelope and send to each, that, property owner. So for that, we asked for money, and, and, you know, additionally, we also need some money to host workshops in the town. That's an expense, like, you know, people usually typically come to these workshops when there's food at the meetings. So, and other things, I don't, 20,000 is not a whole lot of money for all these that we are planning to do, but at least, you know, it is a good start. Again, we are behind on this, we have to start going, get going on the Program for Public Information Committee, adopting the PPI Plan, setting up the committee, starting our outreach efforts, and we haven't yet started that yet, and I'm still looking for names for the PPI Committee. If you have names, please, please forward those to me, and then maybe at the next meeting, we can start looking at the draft PPI Plan and adopt it.
Could we ask people, a quiet notice on, on public media? Could I collect names for you, people who might be interested? Could I collect names for you, people who might be interested? We have a lot of people who are, who are very much environmentalists, we have a lot of people who are very much social activists in terms of their neighborhoods and that. Those are some of the people who should be on this, in terms of driving this.
Yes, we only need seven members, out of which I think two should be, one is the engineer and one is the building inspector, and three non-governmental employees. The composition of the committees is such that it includes both, not the elected representatives, but the citizen volunteers and the government staff. So I will send you again, tomorrow morning, I'll send you an email with what the exact composition should be, so you can think about the names accordingly.
I was just, someone like Joe Gresko, who knows our environment here better than anybody, maybe he knows someone in local community who could represent us, and that might be someone that we
Actually, I have a couple of names. I've given one to Sismeetha already, I just have to give the telephone number and address and stuff. I actually have
Yes.
A second name of someone, so, you know, I, I think getting three people will be pretty easy. It's a shame that we're not doing the community calendar anymore, because this could have gone in the calendar as a couple of pages, and it would have cost you $450 to, or, yeah, $400 to send it out to every home in the town of Stratford. And that's all it would have been. And no work. Sorry about that, Chief, but. Anything else on coastal resiliency?
Nothing much.
No, okay. Any other, no questions, then, moving on to
One, one other comment. Bridgeport was doing a open meeting on their coastal resiliency, and it was being billed as a regional meet. I didn't see any mention of Stratford, but we're going to be affected if they put up the dykes and areas that they want to along the chan, the channel there. All the flooding will then come right to us, so if there is any way that you could add yourself to their voice, it would be a great thing to do.
Sure, I know President Bridgeport's director, so I'll reach out to their director and ask. Unfortunately, even though we were immediate, we are immediate neighbors, none of us received an invite to regional meet.
Yeah.
Sorry, that's how it has been.
Okay, anything else on that? Otherwise, we'll go to digital signs. Sismeetha was kind enough to do some research for us, and she got information from the APA Policy Guide on billboard controls, which is mainly for billboards, but also from Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, guidance on digital signage.
Oh, I thought it was
So thank you for doing that research. And from the information she gave to us, I went to Montgomery's website and found their actual zoning regulation for digital signs. Actually, it was their zoning regulation for all signs, everything. So I went through that, and I, you know, don't believe in doing work over when somebody's done all the work for us. I plagiarized, but I'm, I'm being upfront and honest, I plagiarized. I took everything and cut and paste, except for maybe the first paragraph, so I put this out as a draft, I have, you will not hurt my feelings if you tear it apart or if you throw it in the trash. But I thought it would be easier if, and maybe get this moving forward faster if we had something to consider and, and work on. Did, did people have, did you bring?
That's my question. I have two separate drafts.
How'd you do that?
Well, one came early in the week, and one came from you yesterday. So I don't know
Are you looking at the right draft?
You have none.
Yeah, one is new signage regulation draft. The other one's new signage regulation draft, but they, they're not the same. Unless I'm totally nuts.
I, I don't know what the first one you're talking about. I only have the one that
Then maybe they are the same.
It's just the same thing.
It is the same.
Two copies. If you have an extra copy, please pass it on to Gail.
To who? Gail.
Yes. And I did look at it, it's a great start. I mean, I can't imagine a non-planner writing it away like so exceptionally good.
I just cut and paste.
But I mentioned to the commission chair earlier today, too, that we need more review and input from other departments on this, especially I am not technically equipped to comment on the lighting standards, for example, that's something that the Public Works and Engineering Department have to look at and comment on. And there are other, you know, committees, like Beautification Committee and Architectural Review Board, they all have somewhat, you know, authority over these, because they will be reviewing applications that come before the town in the commercial areas. So if you can give another month's time, I will pass it on to everybody that is, that could be concerned with something like this in the town, and have them review it and seek their feedback. Maybe, you know, the elimination standards for Pennsylvania may be different from what we use in Stratford, and I just wanted to make that clear. I want to pass it before the police, especially police will have a lot of comments on stuff like this, because it deals with accidents, it crashes if, you know, it's too flashy.
Yeah. Before we send it on, if maybe we could look at a little bit of it to make sure that it's what we, the planning commission, want to do.
Well, I
So that we're not sending something on, and they make changes, and we didn't agree with that part to begin with.
I think that we, what we need to do is to say, this is not our, this is not our sign regulations, this is our digital sign regulations, which fall within the boundaries of our signing, our sign regulations.
Well, yeah.
Do you understand what I'm saying? That you can have a sign that is digital or non-digital, but theoretically, they both conform to our current signage regulations. What we're saying is that this rules, if, if you're going to have an electric digital sign, this is what we require you to do, in addition to the other.
Although, if you look at the, the very first line, we're really only talking about allowing the town of Stratford to install or construct a digital sign at Paradise Green, The Point, and at West Broad, Green and Main Street. We're not talking about any other sign.
So then we want to say, town of Stratford, digital sign regulation?
That, that's fine.
Do you understand what I'm saying that, because
Well, section 16.2.8 is specific to signage for the town of Stratford. Okay, so it's
So it shouldn't make a difference whether it's digital or not?
Okay, so it's within?
Correct, yeah.
Yes.
It would be in addition or
But can I, having, I spent, I earned millions of dollars in my, in my time doing digital signs. So I, I think that we're only going to have more digital signs, or more people wanting digital signs in the future, that it might behoove us to think about, a lot of the wood carved signs are great and colonial, but businesses into the future are going to want what they're now doing in their lobbies, they're going to want that outside. I was at, I was at Smilo in Fairfield, and they just added the, what's the, the company that does all the office buildings around here? They just added all of the digital signage in their lobbies, exactly what we're talking about doing here.
Right, and, and the, but the aim of doing this first was to move it along, to be honest with you. To give the town the opportunity to put up digital signage for information of, as it says here, special events, community events, emergency notification, and public service announce, announcements operated by the town or a town not-for-profit. So it's not to be used by businesses, it's only for the town to make announcements, and as it says, special events are defined by, and this is up for interpretation or discussion, as one to four day events that are open to the public, and this would include registration dates for not-for-profits. We're not trying to go into the area of businesses yet.
But we do say not-for-profits, which means every church, every VFW hall, every
Unless you want to change that.
Right. That's what I'm saying, is we, we're, we're already going beyond just Stratford town, just beyond the two demonstration projects that we did.
Well, we're only putting, we're only talking about Paradise Green and West Broad, nowhere else.
But we've already mentioned not-for-profits, so
No, that, that's who can put information on the sign.
On, okay.
Not put up signs.
No, I think what he's saying, though, is when you open this up for nonprofits to be able to post
Yeah.
We would be hit with a gluttony, I think, of, of non-town
Yeah. Yeah, and, and that is possible.
And maybe we should just, maybe we should keep it to town-specific functions.
And, and I can understand, because you're right, it could open up Pandora's Box.
But that
But right now, we have A-frames doing that.
Right, that defeats what we're trying to do, is get rid of all of those, all the crap that's down on Paradise Green all the time with every
Right, but also
Pan-ette dinner in the world.
If I can, it says special events, community events, we're not going to put up every church's schedule of, you know, when they have their masses or their services.
But if they're doing a pancake
If they're doing a pancake breakfast, that could go up.
If I may add, the way I look at this is, first of all, we have an existing sign regulation, so this should be an amendment to the sign regulation to define what a digital sign is and what parameters are going to apply for the digital signs. Secondly, I would keep it more general than the specific locations, but I would say, as, you know, these two locations are fine, but other than these two locations, if somebody wants to put a digital sign at, for example, in Lordship Boulevard, just to, you know, display emergency notifications, then I would say, any other location besides these two locations would require a special review by the zoning commission, so that, you know, it's dealt on a case-by-case basis, because if digital signs are put everywhere, we don't want to look like Times Square. The one about nonprofits advertising in this, if you have a cost associated with putting, you know, displaying their advertisement, you kind of automatically eliminate the routine advertisements, because nobody wants to do an advertisement for a mass or, you know, just paying a certain cost. So when you associate with a cost and say, we encourage nonprofits to display at the town center, but there's a cost that is applicable, and it should be for public service, I mean, for the broader public service only, or, I mean, these are the conditions you can, when you select a vendor, you can talk to the vendor and see how you can tailor the conditions for, you know, putting these messages. But first things first, when we are looking at the regulation, we want to see, how large should the sign be? How high should it be? Should it be a vinyl material or a vinyl-framed one or something else? That should have an illumination that is brighter than the regular parking lights. And, you know, how distracting would it be for the drivers? How far away should it be from the intersection? These are the things that we, as the commission, should decide, and then leave it to the vendor or whoever operates it to decide what kind of messages go in there and how much they would charge per message.
Yeah, some of that I, I certainly would agree with, but I think you have to be careful that we aren't opening this up to digital signs for businesses. You know, I want to be specific in nature
It's for public service
Right.
And only
What would be the position if a business were to come in and say, I want to take my wooden sign and make it electronic?
You can't right now.
I think
Right now, they
Right now, we don't have anything for digital signs in the town, and I think it is not, it is not the direction that the Town Architectural Review Board wants to take, because they, clearly, we had a meeting a few days ago, and I discussed this part with them, too, and they said, we don't want to look, we don't want the town to look like Times Square. I mean, it's Stratford, we don't want it to look like Times Square with every commercial business getting a digital sign. So they clearly have a stand on that.
Yeah, and I think we, we want to be cognizant of it, and that's why we were trying to be very specific. This is only for the two digital signs. We can discuss the possibility of maybe putting, allowing emergency notification signs in other locations as a temporary, as, as temporary, but when you say it would have to have zoning approval, then it wouldn't be an emergency.
That's correct. The messages could be emergency, but the location of the sign, the installation, would not happen right away. It will be pre-thought as to where these have to be installed, and that goes into, that's an approval process in itself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, well, that we could also, or it could be put into this amendment, that certain locations, Lordship Boulevard, I don't know what other locations, it also could be a temporary emergency sign, because by the nature of emergency, we certainly hope it's temporary. So that's another addition that we could put into this, is locations that are allowed to have temporary emergency
Or maybe we could just say, all towns on town property only.
We could do that.
And not any private or commercial property
You know, once, one thing I see in shoreline towns throughout the, I see it in Long Island, I see it in Jersey, is evacuation route signs.
That's what I was going to say.
So you'll see those, yeah, and I'm using maybe Main Street and the Burma Road being two access areas where people in Lordship would see an evacuation route sign going on. So I see that quite often, and it's popping up more and more based on Sandy hitting and the flooding and
And I believe that the town has
That would, that would fit right in with our, with our coastal resiliency
Yes, and then
Program. If we could show them we're doing that, it would, that would gain us big points for evacuation routes.
That's correct.
Alone.
Yeah, when the chair brought this idea up for the town green, I mean, for the Paradise Green and the, you know, town hall location, in my mind, I was mostly thinking about, how can we use this for doing emergency notifications and evacuations efficiently? Because when you have to advertise on evacuation routes, you have to go through media, and you have to display paper maps, and now you get something like this where you can, you know, press a button and it gets displayed
Right.
Everywhere.
So that is something maybe we can work on adding to this, to allow that. The discussion around, do we allow not-for-profits to be eligible to use these signs? I think we, maybe we can allow the nonprofits in town to use it, and just have the town, because it later on says that all of this has to go through whatever system or process the town of Stratford sets up, the town can control it either through fees, as you said, or through whoever, first come, first served, and we only allow, I think I, I put in here, and again, this is just, I threw it out there, that the sign only displays six events at, at a time. So six events will scroll through, they don't scroll through, they're not, they flash up, stay for, I think it says 10 seconds somewhere in here, and then they, the next sign comes up with the next event. So that way, you're controlling the number, you know, and hopefully, that will also help the police to determine, you know, how safe it is.
I thought this, the multipliers in here are
You love it?
Really, I mean, it, it's complicated.
Yes.
It's not an easy fix, and I, you know, so obviously, the police have to take a look at this.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You know, there's a lot of information, and I think, you know, reading through this, it's, you just think it's an easy little sign going up, and there's not a lot of people that are involved in this, but it's a big process.
It, it is, and, and I'm sure things will get changed. I, as I said, I just I, as I said, I just want to make sure from our standpoint...
It's a first start for us.
Yeah. And, you know, maybe special events are not one to four day events. Maybe they're only one-day events or one to three-day events. You know, you can play with some of that. I threw out one to four days because I don't think we have an event in town that goes beyond four days. I don't think they even go four days.
What if, we did not call this as much sign, new sign regulation, but make it a thing. Call it Stratford, Stratford Town kiosks. Do you know what I mean? Give it a name that it becomes, that's traditional service of a kiosk in the town, in the town square, which is where everybody put their handbills up. What if we were to do something like that and then we're, we don't need to worry about everything else? This is what, this is the regulation for Stratford's kiosk.
But by kiosk, would that also include businesses?
No.
So, I mean, we could call it anything you want. It's, what's important is what's in the, you know, in the regulation.
I think, I would say kiosk more refers to something that has a gazebo style, like you have somebody sitting there answering questions for you and it's more interactive. But essentially, this is just a sign that goes on the wall or on, you know, ground-mounted.
And you actually, you could put in the regulation that this is only available to the town of Stratford, right? That this is strictly, you know, for use for the town of Stratford. Being put in the regulation, that would be easy enough to do so businesses don't get involved in it.
Right. Well, and it does say, it's, where do I see? It's for special events, community events, emergency notification and public service announcements. Maybe operated is not the right word, but for the town of Stratford or a town not-for-profit. So it's strictly town, it's strictly the town administration or not-for-profit.
How about the town government?
We could put town government, yeah.
Then you're, the town government for use by its nonprofits.
Yeah.
Then, then you're actually saying, that's what I'm, when I was talking about a handbill in the town square, kind of, that's what you're, you're providing the vessel for your organizations that have been...
Right. And this is the aim. It's to clean up these areas of these A-frames that nobody can read and, and to be more efficient and effective with the signage.
I would also wonder if there, you know, the little barcode that they have now?
Yep.
That you can just flash your phone and get all the information downloaded.
QR code, yes.
QR codes, use them for...
Yeah, couldn't we, couldn't we do all these signs with that? Boom, they could be Wi-Fi blasting those out. Anybody who wants it, just click and get it and get all the information.
That's not that easy.
If we did that, then everybody would start working with that.
No, but a lot of retail stores do it.
Yes.
It's not new technology, it exists.
It is, it does. And maybe it should be through somebody who monitors this. So we don't have every person putting all kinds of signs in there, but...
I don't say putting signs, I say getting the data.
Getting the data.
Anybody who passes by could just say, boom.
Download it.
Boom, yeah, download it, get it.
Well, that's something we could look into.
As a driver.
Yeah.
Well...
And that way, they don't have to look at it.
But a 20-year-old...
They'll take care of the police.
That's their life.
Well, certainly, that's, that is technology that we can look into, you know, but I don't know if that has to be in the ordinance or the zoning regulations.
The other thing, I wish we had Phase Three of the bike greenway done, because you're putting one of these at Paradise, which is where the next phase of the greenway is going to go. And you're putting one at Broad Street, which is where this one, this greenway that we're doing now has a loop end. So both of these could be incorporated into the greenway. And you could call, you could actually make them a part of the visual signage of the greenway itself. And then you don't need to, it's like you are doing not just cars, but you're doing anybody who's walking or riding. But you also could incorporate that into a Stratford Greenway sign and you would...
Well, we'll just add the Greenway Committee as another group that looks at it.
Well, you actually could, because there is money. This is perfect.
It's not a bad idea.
This is the kind of thing that AARP and their funding, there are grants that we could apply up to $10,000.
And when we get to, which is not our purview, which is the funding of this, you know, that's something that could, could be discussed and could...
There is money in both of those projects for signage and for landscape design.
Well, as our liaison with the Greenway Committee, you could, at their next meeting, make them aware of this.
I tried to the last time.
Oh, okay.
When they moved the, in, at the Perry House.
Well, try again, if you would, please.
Well, my new partner will help.
Okay. Very good. Does anybody have any issues with the fact that there's a two-week period that the event can stay up in only two weeks? Would you like to change that to one week? I just threw out two weeks. So the, whatever the event is, whatever the announcement is, it can only stay on the sign two weeks?
I think if you, if you made it more than six or seven messages, then you could say two weeks and it would be okay. But I think about the number of signs that we have on Paradise in the heat of summer, you could have two dozen signs down there. All of them current events. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, but some of them are like...
Well, some of them are...
Ongoing karate classes.
Right.
That's not...
Registration, yeah.
Yeah, or registration for something.
Do you know what I mean? It's like, what you have to decide is, not everybody will get the message. And if it's there for two weeks and they travel by that spot four or five times, they might get five different messages, but they're not going to get all of the messages. But that's no different than with the current signs.
Yeah. Nothing's going to take care of this perfectly.
It's not going to make it a perfect thing.
Yeah.
But anybody walking along might see all 12 signs or whatever.
Yeah. I just, you know, the thought process with the six is that if they're all 10 seconds, right, and there are six of them, that's a minute, right? Did I multiply that right? Well, most of our lights, our traffic lights, you probably sit there for at least a minute before they change. And that was the thought process.
This is where they know exactly when the lights, turn signals are there.
And that's where the police can come in. Again, I'm just trying to put something together that we can say, yeah, we're good with, and then we can start passing it on, and then they can adjust it. Because we're not approving the ordinance or the regulation. All we're doing is getting it to the point where it can go to other committees and commissions. Like the animated signs, I said that, I put in that those were not allowed. So that they're not the flashing things that could distract the driver. The foot candles, we can take up with the town engineer. The signs would be illuminated or displayed from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. You want to go shorter, longer?
I think 24 hours.
Well, they are in residential areas. And they can be controlled as far as timing is concerned. So I thought if you'd get less problems.
I think, yeah, we should also be mindful about the amount of electricity it takes to run 24 hours. And is it really, you know, green enough to do that way?
Yeah. And, you know, is it really cost-efficient? Because how many people are going to see it between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM? Unless you're out.
Nurses coming home.
Like catchers on the way in.
Bartenders.
Again, it's not going to resolve everything, but actually, this was the time that was in Montgomery County's ordinance, so I just stole it. So if you have a problem, we can change that, but I would, I would caution against the 24 hours. That's just overkill.
I had a question on the next paragraph about Trivision boards. Is that a, is that a product name?
I believe it is. That's, again, one of my cut and paste.
Okay. And then in the next paragraph?
And that, just so you know, the changeable copy sign, it would do it automatically, okay? But, well, maybe that's not where it is. Somewhere, if the thing malfunctions, there is a specific sign that goes up and just stays up.
Enjoy beautiful Stratford.
Right.
Yeah, there's a frame store inside of it.
Yeah. So I think that's somewhere else. The Trivision boards, honestly, I don't know what that is.
In the, in the next, two paragraphs down, in the last part of the sentence, "Shall be maintained in safe conditions and good repair." By whom? By town?
By the towns.
By the town.
Yeah.
That's where they're going to want to know. You're giving us another job.
Well, it's to their benefit too. I mean, it will announce their celebrate Stratford events, other activities that are going on, and the emergency, so...
Keeps the long-cunning crew from having to move the signs and cut, cut the grass, right?
Absolutely.
That's the aim.
Not that they're really doing that now anyway, but...
Right. As far as the sign-supporting structure, basically, what we're saying, it should be consistent with the neighborhood architecture. So considering that West Broad is, is within the historical part of town, it might be more in keeping with that, that area. There's no law that says that they both have to be the same. It probably is cheaper if you buy them that way, but, you know, yes.
I think anything that relates to commercial areas should automatically be an effort to the Architectural Review Board, because they were doing our commercial area design guidelines. So this, it's part of the town's commercial area, so somewhere in this, there should be language to the fact that said, oh, you know, you know, the signs have to be reviewed and approved or recommend, they are just a voluntary recommended body, they're not going to make final decisions.
What are they now, the...
Architectural Review Board.
So we can add some language in there.
So that, you know, the materials that are used are consistent with the town's character.
Again, we're only talking about two signs.
That's all.
So...
But they're in the prime location.
Yeah.
And with everything else going on, complete streets, greenway and everything else, this is, this has to seamlessly integrate into the design.
Yeah.
If you go to the page that has, I don't know what page it is, but, oh, it's the second page at the bottom, message display.
Yeah.
It really covers everything we've been discussing, discussing in that paragraph.
Well, our job is done.
I mean, it's pretty thorough.
Well, I think Montgomery County did a great job.
They did. So maybe we should just send this off to, obviously to zoning?
I don't think it goes yet to zoning.
Just for them to review it, maybe?
I think eventually it will go to them.
I think, first things first, I would just sit down with the Public Works Director and the Engineering Director separately, get their comments.
Okay.
Tweak it, then pass it on to the police as a step for them to review it and then bring it back.
This should be simplified and reorganized a little bit more before they see it.
Oh, yeah, it's not formal.
It'll open up too many questions for them.
Yes, I would simplify it, but I also think, instead of just mass emailing to everyone, sitting with various entities one by one and, you know, tweaking the language is more preferable.
That makes sense. Unless there's something in here that jumps out at you that says, "No, I totally disagree with this." We could just make a motion tonight to, if it's okay, Sismetha and I can kind of put it in the right format, make it, take the comments that were made tonight, add them into it, and then start the process of meeting with the various departments, commissions, you know, that it really applies to.
I move...
Yes.
That we give our chairman, our endorsement, our chairman and our new planning director, our endorsement for rewriting this, simplifying it, and sending it on to our Public Works Director.
I would just say departments.
Departments.
Town departments and commissions.
Yes.
And committees. Simple.
I'll second that.
And then after they comment, we can vote on it.
Yeah, and then it'll come back to us.
Then we'll send it to planning, I mean, to zoning.
And then it will go to zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, any other comments, questions? We have a motion?
My only other comment is, let's not do like the greenway and wait, get, have it take two years to get through here, so...
No way.
Move forward. Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. And, okay, so we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so moving along. Thank you for your input and everything, and to Sismetha for doing all the legwork on this thing. Okay, we have a text amendment for Section 4.1.3 for a commercial kitchen in a private residence. I'm going to leave this to Sismetha. Lucky you.
Sure. I have a lot of information here today that I printed this afternoon. I was checking with our Health Department on, to see what they had specifically on the commercial kitchens and what the state's cottage food manual describes and prescribes. So this is a lot of information. I don't expect you to sit down and just read this right now and decide on it right away. But before I distribute, I just wanted to tell you very briefly where this all came from. There's this person, Debbie Green Montalvo, she's been a Stratford resident for more than 20 years. And she also, I think, gardens at the reservoir farm in Bridgeport. And she's a big believer of urban agriculture and she, you know, feels like this would give her a second resource of income. And people like her who are unable to get employed would have a window of opportunity by, you know, preparing food at home and selling to folks in the neighborhood. I don't see any problem with it, because, you know, we want everybody to have some source of income. But at the same time, there's a reason why there is zoning, there's a reason why we have health laws, because there are people who are allergic, there could be fire accidents, there could be, you know, noise-associated nuisances. And the person is living in an apartment home, whereas, you know, in single-family homes, it is otherwise allowed in the town of Stratford. So this needs a little bit of research. I wouldn't shoot it down right away, but I would try to figure out a way to help these people, but also help the town hold the highest standards for the health and safety of the public. With that said, I would pass on examples of how Indiana State Department of Health has prescribed requirements for a commercial kitchen at home. You may please take one and pass it on. And I also have, oh, I have... And I also have Connecticut's Cottage Food Manual. I made copies for all of us here. So this email is from Greta Brunel, who's the Deputy Director in the Health Department, and she said, "The Connecticut's Cottage Food Manual describes instances where foods can be made in a private home and sold to the public under a DCP license. Typically, most food, potentially hazardous, scattered food, for example, cannot be made and sold from a private dwelling where the kitchen is also for personal, private use. There are some instances where residents add a commercial kitchen to their home in addition to a private kitchen for their personal use. This is often allowable if the commercial kitchen meets stipulations of the Public Food Code. We would need to know the specifics about what the residents was looking to make from their apartment." So, again, I'll take one and pass it on. And please review this information. In the meantime, I also told the chair that I would speak to somebody at Hartford, I couldn't get hold of them. couldn't get hold of them, Hartford has, um, adopted an urban agriculture zoning ordinance, uh, I don't think in Hartford, too, they allow in multifamily areas, so I have to double check with somebody who is working there, um, and I'll come back with more clearer answers for our next meeting, uh, so that if the commission decides that this is a viable option for the town residents, and this is a direction that the town should be looking into, I would put in more effort and time into this.
Can I, I, I hate, I'm sorry for making all these comments, this is something that near and dear to my heart, because this is an incubator for an incredible amount of women who are using the resources they have to build a business for themselves, and that there's a hump, you've gotta make certain amount of product before you can make it profitable, otherwise, you, it, it ends up costing you, I know several people, some of whom have worked with the Health Department in Stratford, some of whom have skirted the laws, um, but if you go into any of our food places around here, you'll see product that was made in local kitchens, um, I know that, whether it's legal or not, it's happening, so I think we've gotta find a way to encourage, because these are exactly the businesses that we say we need to encourage, some of these people working in their kitchen, three years from now will have a commercial kitchen, or will have a restaurant, it's been proven time and time again, we should not be turning our backs on these people, I know that, from a friend of mine who went through the whole process with the Health Department, Stratford Health Department was actually pretty good, they, they knew which rules to bend and which they couldn't bend, um, so, I, I think that, I'll be interested to hear what the Health Department says about this, uh, 'cause I think her case is compelling.
I agree with you, I worked in an urban agriculture master plan just recently, and I am, um, after hearing from a lot of residents on their interest and passion for local food and gardening, and, uh, looking for healthy op- food options in, um, otherwise, um, health desserts or food desserts, um, I cannot agree more with you, but, again, we have to make sure that, um, whatever it is, it's not, it's only, it's not gonna have, cause additional harm to the neighbors, and there are people who are very sensitive to smells, and food allergies, and, uh, you know, I think in Indiana State example that I pa- forwarded to you, just ma- take a look at it, it says that they encourage it, but they also ensure that the person selling this type of food has a label on the food that says it does not, um, meet certain standards, so it's clearly specified, the people know that this is homemade, and it does not, there's no preservatives, and it doesn't meet few standards. Again, um, what should be the size of the kitchen, um, and do we want everybody to have their own kitchens, or do we want to encourage, um, commercial kitchens in churches or other locations where all these women can come together and use that space, um, so, these are the things I wanna explore, um, because if you want, um, a commercial kitchen, a fully servicing commercial kitchen to be in place in an apartment unit, it should meet certain requirements, the stove and, you know, the space itself should meet certain requirements, you cannot have pets in the home, if you have pets in the home and you're making food and you're selling, there could be contamination, so these are the things we have to explore.
I just wanna add to with, you know, with my thirty-some odd years of experience in the catering business in town, um, you know, there are a lot of restrictions, there's a lot to think about here, um, and from a liability standpoint, as well as from a safety standpoint, and I think, um, we've gotta be very careful because, first of all, it's an extra strain on the Health Department and resources to check out all these establishments, because once you open up the door, for one, it's opening up the door for many, and, um, I just know from our experience in dealing with the Health Department, there are so many regulations when it comes to food handling, um, proper, uh, um, dishwashing methods, making sure you got the proper temperature and everything else, so, I'm not opposed to it, but I just think there's a lot to be considered here before we move forward with it.
I agree with you, and I think, um, the right partnership would be to work with the Health Department on this, um, from the, um, beginning, and also to include a town attorney or, uh, some legal, uh, counsel, so that we are not making decisions that will impact somebody's life, and I just wanna make sure that we're taking all the right steps here.
It's one, uh, it, it just had, there was, I didn't notice anything in Harrison County's Health, and, and again, this is the Health Department, um, but I'd be interested to see if there's any type of coverage, insurance coverage that's necessary.
I, yeah, I, in one of the examples that I read online, they said something around twenty-five thousand or more, or two fifty dollars per month, something like that, it varies from town to town.
Okay. Uh, I think those are all good points, and, and I, I do think it's something to review and, and see where it takes us, uh, and I like everybody's suggestions about talking to Health Department, uh, the Fire Department, you know, other agencies, we may also wanna have a public hearing on this as well to get input from, 'cause they have neighbors, you know, it's not like a single dwelling residence where they have neighbors, but the neighbors are a distance from them, from where they're cooking, these are people that could be on the other side of the wall, you know, so, I think, uh, we should, um, do our research.
Yeah. Plus you have other retail establishments that are gonna be affected by it.
Yes.
Which is, you know, something, uh, you have, you know, these.
Yep.
There could be a way where these women could sell to the local retailer, healthy food, and, uh, create, drive the local economy, um, so, I, I, I think this is a whole project in itself, now, what is the priority, and the world is changing, and the zoning is outdated, it's from the sixties, and so, how do we make the zoning meet the current world requirements, um, and is it something that stands out as a priority for this commission right now, considering that we have a whole array of topics here?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and if you wanna make that call and say, yes, we need to research more, and, you know, even if it's baby steps, then I would go ahead and start doing more work on that.
Well, maybe what we could do right now is, is table this and give you, uh, and time.
For everyone, time to review, yes.
Yeah, to, to look at it, to review it and, and think about it, and then, i- you know, when we're ready, we can take it off the table.
I, I also think maybe we need to hear from the Health, our local Health Department, because if you look at cottage food, what they're talking about is, the one thing that you really have to understand is potentially hazardous food, meats, eggs, those kind of things, we're not talking as much about baked goods and cakes and cookies, which is a lot of what, what anybody initially starting would be doing, um, so, it's a different kind of operation that, maybe that limitation helps, you know, if they're slaughtering whole pigs and doing pig roasts in their backyard, then we, we, it's a different situation.
But the Health, and the, and the Health Department is, I'll give you, for instance, I don't know if you saw in the paper the other day about, uh, I think there were eight establishments in the town that didn't pass.
Yes.
So, it's as simple as, uh, keeping a chemical, um, within a certain distance to where you're preparing food, and it could be an oversight, and a lot of, and we've had that happen before in the past, where, you know, you had some, um, glass cleaner that was near, um, food preparation, and the Health Department comes in, they'll see that glass container, it's not in its proper place, and four points, and basically, you basically fail the, and that's a four-point move, then you fail.
Yeah.
So, and I'm just looking at households, and looking at people working in their houses, and who's really gonna monitor that to make sure, it's a, it's a mammoth task for the Health Department, really is, so.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say that I believe there were eight restaurants that passed.
Was it eight that passed?
Yeah, I think so, so.
Oh, the red.
Wanted to, wanted to have a little positive note.
Was it?
So, uh, could I have a motion to table, and then we'll, we can start researching and seeing where it goes?
I'd like to make a motion to table.
Thank you, Mr. Vigliotti, can I have a second?
Second? Oh, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Watson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, so we'll table that, now we have MetroCog Bike Share, one of Mr. Watson's favorite subjects, bicycles, do you wanna tell us about this?
Yes, I have been, um, attending the meetings on Regional Bike Share Program since I started working here, um, a few months ago, and, um, they're trying to figure out a way to, um, allow vendors, um, to come into the towns, uh, to introduce bike racks that can be publicly shared, but, um, they don't want to introduce anything that is not, uh, acceptable for the towns, um, and essentially, um, there are vendors who are interested in, uh, installing up to five fifty units across the region, and which town or, um, city gets more depends on where the demand is, but at this time, um, the region wants to know, um, I have shared, um, draft ordinance, and the, the region wants to know if, um, there is any interest from the commission side on this, uh, and wants to know what steps we should take to actually, you know, um, get this going in the town, so, you're being informed here because you're the planning commissioner, and you have a major role in sound planning decisions for the town, uh, we are also trying to meet with, um, other department heads and a representative from mayor's office in the coming week, so that we get their input as well, in, in terms of what, mm, is allowed in the s- uh, town's code and the si- sidewalk ordinance, I spoke briefly to the Public Works Director and the Engineering Director, and they said, you know, they, there were some bike racks that were in, installed in the town properties only, and most of the times, it was, uh, these were installed towards the property side and not the street side, and that's how it's been going, I communicated this to the Architectural Review Board, and they said, you know what, the town should follow a certain theme, like, what is Stratford famous for, maybe the lighthouse, maybe lighthouse-themed bike rack, something unifying, so that everybody can see across the town, and, you know, um, it, well, it just promotes more, um, Stratford as a destination, mm-hmm.
Part of, a good part of Complete Streets is to come up with that design.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, type of bench, bike rack, lamppost.
Yes.
That will essentially be town line eventually, so, that's, that is part of the funding for.
Okay.
Are we, are we talking about the rental bikes?
Yes.
And the racks, so?
Like, city bikes.
Like, city bikes, which I think is an excellent idea, I, I know there's a lot of people that could, that walk down to the train station to catch a train during the course of the day, if you had some in Paradise Green, and some in the center, I think, you know, especially with the TOD and, uh, looking at, um, Ferry Boulevard now, in the distance to get over to the, uh, to the trains, to have a bike would be quite advantageous, and I think, you know, not only that, we're promoting health for our citizens.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and less cars piling up at the, uh, at the intersection down here where the train is, uh, you know, every morning, where it takes you fifteen minutes just to get through.
Yeah.
The center of town.
Yeah, they, especially if the Greenway goes through, and so you have these bike paths that lead to the railroad station and some of these other key points in town, that, I, I think that's, it works out great to, um, save money, gas, the environment, you know, uh, uh, healthy, i- it hits a lot of the sustainable parts, uh, that we want to, uh, promote.
I have a couple of questions on this, if I can, may I?
You may.
Uh, I've followed a lot of the bike programs all, all across the country, um, I think in some ways, it's premature for us to do that, because we have no paths designated other than on a map, but, vi- visibly, we don't have any marked paths, which I don't know if the town assumes the liability, or if the bike company assumes the liability, but.
I, I.
Could be, we could be opening ourselves up to, and I, who am encouraging bike riders everywhere, all the time, I just say that getting to the train station is one of the most dangerous rides for the average person, um.
You, you don't think New York City's a little treacherous?
Yeah, but.
Mister, Mister.
I rode my bike for my, most of my life in New York City, but you learn how dangerous it is, it's harder on Main Street to understand where all the dangers are, because they're not necessarily at intersections, they're at where.
Sismetha, go ahead.
Yes, I, I think, um, it's, it's a chicken versus egg situation here, as planners and town officials and, um, commission members, we all want, um, green environment, healthy environment, we all want, uh, low carbon emissions on the roads, but we are unable to secure resources to build paths everywhere, but on the flip side, if you encourage more people to ride, ride the streets responsibly by educating them through campaigns such as Share the Road, Street Smarts, uh, that other towns and cities have been doing, so that, you know, everybody is aware of the fact that the road just doesn't belong to automobiles, it become, it belongs to pedestrians, it belongs to bicyclists, it belongs to everyone, I think that, that thinking would also help in increasing the number of riders, and once the number of riders increase, there is more case for building more resources around those, and we can make a case that we have, like, we have thousand bicyclists from this point to this point, but we don't have any designated paths, and the more riders on the street, the less likely there will be accidents, because the cars are now aware that there are bicyclists riding ju- right next to them, right now, it's just one or two bicyclists riding, and the cars take over, and obviously, there is more room for accidents, and there is no education component around it, um, I think the timing of this is right, because, um, by the time they enter an RFP or an RFI, they're looking for request for information from the vendors, by the time they execute that, and, and, you know, get into the point, uh, where they're about to implement, our Complete Streets implementation might have taken off in the town center, so, that's, that's a good intersection there, like, you know, where you would have your infrastructure, and then you have the bike, uh, shared facilities.
Now, are they looking for us to approve this, or this whole?
No, they just want, there are towns in this region that are, you know, that may not be agreeable, to an idea like this, uh, not everybody wants bikes on roads, so they should, they just wanna make sure that the commissions are aware, you know, we're, they're looking at options, whether you want dockless sharing systems, where anybody can rent a bike from any location, and then go to another location and just park it there, uh, and what locations, uh, should be encouraged in the town, um, I think Ferry Boulevard comes as a priority because of the shopping destination there, and the workforce riding from the neighborhoods, and connecting to the train station, um, basically, it's just informing you that something like this is happening, and trying to know what your interest is, and if you have any concerns about this, that should be addressed, and then we'll also meet with the departments to know what ordinances are in place, and if they, you're agreeable to an ordinance like this, and then I'll come back to the commission again when actually the ordinance for the town of Stratford is prepared, the draft ordinance.
So they're just really trying to, uh, assess, assess our interest?
Yes.
Not actually to vote on.
Anything.
Every detail in this, at this time.
My assumption, this is a business model, though, that there, there is a company that's interested in, are several companies that are interested in supplying this as a service, so, would Stratford be potentially signing on for a vendor to supply these bikes to this Stratford town?
Well, eventually, if they pass the ordinance.
Right.
That's something we discussed at length, too, whether you wanna encourage a single vendor or multiple vendors, um, because a single w- vendor means you're monopolizing the market, and you're entering into a contract for a period of time, like seven years at the minimum, and if it doesn't work out, you're stuck with the vendor.
That's what.
On the flip side, multiple vendors means there is no, um, uniformity, and now, there are, like, there's one city bike, there's something else, so, how do you make these uniform, and, you know, we're different colored, and also the question of, um, advertising that comes with bike parking, locations like, you know, they have these digital boards, um, in New Haven, I know there's been this concern about McDonald's being displayed on the digital boards, on the, on the signs that are adjacent to the bike racks, and everybody's like, you're advertising. And everybody's like, you're advertising unhealthy food next to a healthy option. So, what is it that we want? Do we want a private, you know, one vendor first come to the town, select properly and do business as opposed to multiple vendors?
Do we need to make a motion or can we?
We don't have to do anything right now, but you can email me your comments on what you think.
How's that?
And I will make sure that these are addressed at our next regional meeting.
But I, my assumption is MetroCog is interested in putting this together as a regional.
Yes.
As a regional service. They're trying to find how many towns would be interested in becoming part of that network.
Yes, and also, they don't want to take decisions for the towns. If one town chooses one direction and then the other town, like, the biggest hurdle would be how would be, how would we implement this on private right-of-way? Would it be through a town ordinance? Does it have to go through a council or is it just, you know?
Have they gotten any buy-in from the trains, from MTA or?
No, they haven't reached out to them yet, I think. It's more about how do you enforce, is it, should we go to the council or not? Or should we just do it as part of an existing regulation?
Are they trying at all to tie this into the bus system?
They are fully in support of tying it into the bus system, but that's something that the Greater Britishport Regional Transit is also interested in. Like, they were part of our complete streets discussion and they're looking to put more bus shelters on the Main Street.
That's what I just think.
On Main Street, yes.
Bus shelter and a.
And a bike rack.
A bike station would be an investment that would make much better sense. And in complete streets, we, we, we had a, we began to create little bits for that as a future element.
I think what's good about this is that we're at the start of the process and have the ability to have input into it now before it actually, you know, becomes, it's either this or nothing. You know, we get to make comments and pass it on so that when they go to or get closer to the final product, it comes back and it'll look, or at least address some of the concerns that we have, hopefully. You know, so we're at the beginning as opposed to finding out about this down the road and I think that's a positive. I think it's, it's a positive program to take a look at. You know, I think it's, the devil's in the detail.
Yes, and if you look at other towns' examples, especially in the West Coast, you'll get a ton of information. And that'll help you make clear decisions on this, too. So, this is something that, you know, you can take your time and let me know in a week or so by email, and that's good enough.
So, if you have, you know, as you go through it, if you have questions, concerns, pass them on.
Stupid question. Did you give us a handout on this?
Yeah.
I did. I know there's a lot of information here.
Oh, it's Edmond D., okay, I'll search and I'll find it.
Sorry.
None of that's me.
Your packages are becoming heavier and heavier, sorry.
Okay. Okay, should we table this or?
I think we should just make.
Leave it on? Table it? Okay, can I have a motion to table and we'll discuss it the next meeting? Mr. Vigliotti is in charge of tabling. Mr. Semf got his hand up faster. So, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, any comments, concerns from the members? Commercial guideline?
We need to waive the rules to include an additional item on the agenda.
Okay. We'd like to get a motion to waive the rules to make an addition to the agenda regarding draft commercial guidelines from our Architectural Review Board.
This is going to be quick. It's just a manual that was prepared by the Architectural Review Board Committee members and I helped them in the, in placing the pictures in the document. If you happen to, you know, find something strikingly contrast to what you see or what you don't want Stratford to look like, or if you think there's something that's not being addressed in the manual, please bring it to my attention. You can email me and I will pass it on to the ERB members.
Was that sent out to everyone yet?
Yes.
So moved on the.
Okay, so we're gonna, we have a motion to waive the rules. Second by Mr. Vigliotti, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Oh, well, you had.
I do, it was emailed later, so.
I don't remember. I remember seeing it, but I don't.
It was emailed separately, that's why. And it was not part of the package because the Architectural Review Board meeting was the day before.
Oh, you, and you did it's like a week, a four?
Yes, yes.
So, can we make a motion to table this until we review?
The PDF you sent.
Sorry?
The PDF you sent?
Yes.
If you open it up, it's okay. But if you try to print it, it's this weird shape.
Okay.
You only get half of the text.
Okay, I'll see how I can fix that. I don't know why, the mayor looked at it and she offered comments, but I don't know if she printed it, so I'll see.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until we have a chance to review.
Okay, so we've already agreed to add it to the agenda.
Yes.
Okay, and now, we're going to table it. Mr. Vigliotti, would you like to say thank you? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll add that to the agenda. The other thing is, and I'll pass this around to you all, there is a Connecticut land use law for municipal land use agencies, boards, and commissions. It's an education and training seminar at Wesleyan University on March 23rd. It's an all-day, eight-thirty to four-thirty. I believe it's fifty-five dollars and the town has agreed to pay for anybody who is interested in going to it. So, I'm going to let you take a look at it. And if anyone is interested, you can let Sussmethan know by.
As soon as possible. The spots are limited.
ASAP, so it's Saturday, March 23rd. So, check your calendars and if anybody's interested, let Sussmethan know. Any other comments or things to discuss? Otherwise, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I guess. We have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Semf, seconded by Mr. Vigliotti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your attention to this two-hour meeting. So, we adjourned at eight-fifty-eight, by my watch. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for hanging in there.
The town said they would pay for this? It's on a Saturday at nine-ten in the morning is planning. I don't know if I want to, I don't want to, it's in Middletown. That means you got to leave here at seven. Seven, well, seven-thirty.